All set? All right, well, I want to welcome you to another press conference. I wanted to talk about a couple of things and I was reminded, I'll first start off with an upcoming Gaithersburg Community Meeting that we have this evening. As many of you know, I've been very consistent withholding community meetings during the fall cycle throughout places in my district. And so, this evening, we'll be talking about Montgomery Village and a number of the issues surrounding the Montgomery Village area, whether it's redevelopment, some of the crime challenges that we had in the past that we're seeing, based on our new investments in recruiting for our police recruits that we've seen, and some strategic enhancements, those numbers and those crime numbers significantly be reduced. And just overall, you know, how are things going in the community? And so, I encourage everyone that might be watching to make sure that you take a look at both our council websites as well as my website for information about the meeting that will happen this evening at Gaithersburg Library at 6:30, but then also the upcoming community meetings that we'll have as well. They're great opportunities to really talk about issues that are important to you. I did want to talk a little bit about some of the things that are coming up on the council's agenda that I think are really important. First, I do want to talk a little bit about some of the workforce development and economic development issues that are front and center for the council. Councilmember Navarro is having a workforce and education summit that's coming up where we're really talking about a number of the issues. I know councilmember Reamer has a bill dealing with apprenticeship. And then we have councilmember Berliner, who has a bill that's dealing with some economic development issues also. And it really does give us a snapshot in terms of what Montgomery County is focused on for these next few months. And so, I wanted to give you a heads up that there is a group that the council has helped not only to support but fund Montgomery Moving Forward that will be issuing a report at the beginning of October that will talk about a key number of recommendations and findings as to how we can continue to support and make sure that economic development and workforce development is fostered here in Montgomery County. Many of you who follow me on Twitter know that I attended a tour of the Blue Plains wastewater treatment facility on Friday morning. And it was a great opportunity to talk with folks about some of the new and innovative things they're doing there. But part of the conversation was that they are continuing to look for a qualified workforce to fill the gaps that they project in the future as they start to expand, as they also see people starting to retire in that industry. And so, it's something that I was fortunate enough at attending the Holy Cross Germantown Hospital grand opening on that Friday later on that day, talk with Dr. Pollard about. And so, it really is to where we see places like Montgomery College forging a very unique kind of groundbreaking effort to meet the needs of our nursing shortage, to be able to partner with a hospital, the first of its kind in the nation, shows how we are able to really answer the call when it comes to some of our workforce development issues. And so, my hope is when it comes to this shortage that apparently is not just at Blue Plains, but also WSSC is experiencing some of the same sort of challenges in terms of what its future might look like for its workforce, we are going to be sitting down and talking about potential programs and partnerships that we can do to answer that call. So, it's a very exciting time for us. I think that, again, Montgomery County finds itself at the forefront of some groundbreaking innovations, really being creative in terms of our economic development and moving that forward. I did want to talk a little bit about some of the other things that we'll see that will be coming up very soon in our Education Committee. And one of those, on October 13th, we do have an Education and Public Safety Committee work session. And we'll be talking about school bus cameras and school resource officers. Many of you know my passion on both of those issues. And I'm looking forward to talking about the potential expansion of our fines for our school bus cameras. I do anticipate that after this meeting, you will possibly see some legislation about increasing those fines. I've talked with members of our Maryland General Assembly as well about this issue, and they remain supportive. And so, from that perspective, I think it's the right direction for us to go in. The reason why I think it's important about that conversation, and I highlighted that, is that our local police are very concerned about some of those fines going to the state of Maryland if people do challenge a larger fine via our school bus cameras. And I've talked with some of our stakeholders at the state level who have expressed an interest in ensuring that if, in fact, we do raise the fines, that that fine would still go to the county. And so, from that aspect, of course, that would require state legislation, but that's something that some members are open to. And so, we're looking at exploring that to ensure that we can achieve both things. We want to make sure that we can continue to fund the program, which means that we need that revenue to continue coming to Montgomery County. But we also want to make sure that these fines are enough of a deterrent so that folks don't continue to do this. Many of you know, it's been reported about the large number of incidents of people passing school buses, and we'll be watching those new numbers as they come out within the next few months that'll give us an even better gauge of how serious the problem truly is. I did also want to talk a little bit about some of our alcohol beverage conversations and with our Department of Liquor Control. That continues to be a topic of conversation. There is no one that is offering any bills at this moment, but I have heard, as many of you have, from our comptroller, who is very clear about his thoughts about Montgomery County. And while I'm not sure that Montgomery County is looking to take those kinds of severe and drastic steps of privatizing DLC, there are changes that I think are necessary to make sure that when it comes to the nightlife economy task force recommendations that were out, that give some of our bars and restaurants the flexibility to get different kinds of inventory beyond what we currently provide. I think that's a direction that we certainly need to go in. And so, I look forward to working with councilmember Reamer and others that served on that task force in trying to move some of those agenda items forward. Many of you know, and I'll close with this one, about campaign finance reform, that we did have a bill that came out from our Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee, and will be coming before the council shortly. Our legal team here at the council needed a little additional time, so we delayed that coming before the council by a week based on their request because they needed to make sure that some of the changes that they had to make were addressed that happened in the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy meeting. I look forward to a very in-depth conversation with full council. I know that there are additional amendments that are still being brought forward, but I do think that we still have a very robust support of us moving forward with a campaign finance reform bill. And so, something like that should be coming through the council very shortly. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to you guys for any questions.
Can I ask you about the last week, well, the week before, rather? Public Safety Committee and Fire Department came before them talking, you mentioned drones. And they kind of went, I'm sorry, what? What is the situation with drones? How is it that a fire department gets these without letting the council know? And what do you think the policy should be on the use of drones?
Well, I think that in my conversations with the county executive to this point, it was explained to me that the reason why they acquired them is they wanted to study and understand their capabilities. They wanted to make sure that they understood whether or not that was something that would be able to work for that particular department. They actually did the due diligence of asking department heads, and I know that our chief of police was not interested in moving forward with exploring the potential of a drone program because of some of the challenges with privacy. However, when we are talking about assessing a fire and the dangers associated with something like that, where drones play an integral role, or could play an integral role, they already do play an integral role in some areas where they're already approved, but could play an integral role in terms of really keeping a lot of our first responders out of dangerous way while still giving us a great snapshot, I think that's something that we do need to explore. At the same time, obviously, as we always do here in Montgomery County, we need to make sure we go through all of the steps to make sure that all of those concerns, whether it be privacy or others, are met. But I think that most constituents would agree that for our firefighters, our first responders that are really trying to assess the situation where it's life and death and seeing what just happened in Prince George's to where a number of firefighters that were fighting a fire actually were hospitalized and with very life-threatening injuries, it certainly is something that I think we need to take a very close look at. So, I think that it wasn't done without the consultation of the council in the sense that they were actually, you know, looking to start implementing these. They were really looking as to whether or not that was even something that would work and then would then take the steps of coming before the council. So, I think that we're just a little premature in terms of what we're asking for, for, from the county executive and from the fire department. And I think that once they've decided whether that's a direction they go in, is when we would then certainly have that conversation with them about what's appropriate.
But do you think they kind of got the cart before the horse? And we purchased them, now we'll figure out if A, I mean, do they, they didn't buy it in the county, but, but again, to expand it to police, should they be able to go out and get howitzers? Because we think we need them, we're not sure how we're going to use them yet.
Yeah, I actually think this one's a little bit different because they really want to understand the technology and what it can actually do before they actually-
Pilot it before they made the purchase.
Sure, it's certainly a possibility from that perspective, but it really is something where either way, it would have achieved the same sort of thing. I mean, it really does warrant us really looking at it. And who best to do that than the chief of fire to say, hey, you know, this is something that's going to work for us or not? They're not using this on a broad scale. This is really just studying the technology itself. That's the reason why they wanted to see it. And so, I think from that perspective, that makes a lot of sense in terms of, you know, we want our department heads to look at innovation, to look at ways in which we can keep people safe and do things, you know, as technology expands, I think we'll see more of this on so many different fronts. I would just say, from a privacy perspective, as we talk about high-speed chases and the use of drones, we use helicopters, we use aircraft to do speed monitoring, we have traffic cameras. So, all these kinds of things are still, are already out there. I mean, you know, so we've already gone past the level of, you know, you can't see a person in their car. Those things are already happening. If we can do it safer, if we can do it in a way that makes sense for us, I think that's something we need to take a look at.
So, the resolution being introduced tomorrow, talk about that and your position on it.
Well, I, I mean, I think that every individual council member has a right to put forth resolutions. It's not something that I think is necessary at this time. That's just my own personal opinion as a council member, but it's, I certainly understand. I've talked with councilmember Berliner and the concerns that he has. I think that my concerns were addressed when I talked to the county executive. And so, from that aspect, that's the reason why I'm not necessarily supporting the resolution because I've already had my questions answered directly talking to the county executive.
And is there, I mean, Kate kind of hinted at this, is there not an element to this as that they did this without the council's knowledge? I mean, usually when they look at stuff like this, they usually kind of say, hey, we're looking at this. Just want to give you a heads up.
Yeah, I think that, no, something like this is certainly within their purview. I mean, if the chief of police is looking at a new bulletproof vest, they don't come to us and say, hey, this is a new bulletproof vest we're looking at, what do you guys think about it? And I mean, I really do look at it as that kind of technology. If the, if the fire chief decides that he wants to go a different direction with the new type of ambulance, they're looking at that before they come to the council and ask about pricing and implementation, all those kinds of things. Those are things that they do as far as research. The difference here is, I guess, they purchased it. But what I would highlight is, is that this isn't like a purchase of a, you know, million-dollar fire piece of apparatus. These things are relatively inexpensive, things that you can buy on Amazon right now. I mean, just the other day, I was talking with a person about an article that was in the paper, and sure enough, it just shows you how our ads are now targeted. As I pulled up the article that was highlighting about the drones, to the side was an advertisement from amazon.com highlighting the number of different drones they had. The most inexpensive one, I think, was $66.95. So, I mean, these are things that are readily available to the public currently. I think that we need to get an understanding of what they are, and I think that the best person to do that is our department heads that can analyze whether or not, because it could just be something that we're looking at when it comes to the public that we might not want them to have. You know, we're talking about departments, but is this something that we need to look at from a public aspect also? So, there's a lot of things that I think we need to really understand about these drones. And we can certainly draw anecdotes from other communities around the nation that have already started to take a look at this more in-depth.
And is it just the fire department or do other departments employ these as well?
From what I understand-
Do you think the fire department uses them?
No, from what I understand, the only one that's looking at potentially using something like this is our fire department right now. You know, our chief innovation officer, who has a responsibility of looking at innovation as a whole, was doing it on the behest of, and working in conjunction with our fire department. But the police department, like I said, chief manager had already said that's not something that he was interested in exploring at this point.
Anything to on Silver Spring Transit Center? The last time I, forgive me because I'm heavily on this, but there had been an article about the station, the Purple Line station, will look the way that you might hope and have all the buildings and muscles. Where are we on the station itself?
So, let me talk about, too, let me talk about the Silver Spring Transit Center. Again, from our briefing last week, things seem to be on, on schedule in terms of what they're looking to do via remediation. And so, from that perspective, I think that, again, and Mr. Dice did not want to overpromise and underdeliver, but we're still looking at something probably in the spring of next year. What I do want to caution folks on, and it could be earlier than that, but is that I think, and this is again, my own personal opinion, my concern has been that a rush to move forward with a definitive end date versus getting it right might have led to, you know, some of the challenges that we had. And so, from that perspective, I think we've got to get this right. We've got to make sure we take the time, that we're making sure that all of the steps that we're taking are the right ones, to make sure that this is a safe facility that will be able to operate for many, many years to come and is a true reflection of the investment that we put forth in this transit center. And so, from that perspective, I think it's important for us to take our time and make sure that all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So, for those that are of the urgent nature and saying, when is it going to open? When is it going to open? Let's make sure we open it safely and that we open it right. And so, that's something that the council has always been consistent on in terms of saying, and the county executive, quite frankly, has been saying that, you know, we want to make sure this is a safe facility. We don't want any safety issues. We don't want to have any challenges from that perspective. And so, if that means another month or additional two months, something like that is okay because safety is tantamount. Then when it comes to Purple Line, unfortunately, the Purple Line discussion about Apex Building and others was a topic of closed session. I've seen reports in the media, but at this point, I'm not able to comment because that is still a topic that is ongoing. But we certainly are making sure that we're doing our best to have a Purple Line that allows for the flexibility of riders to get on at multiple stations, trying to make it convenient for them to do so, because that ultimately speaks to the success of that public transit project.
What about the, when people look at, you know, okay, the Purple Line station isn't going to look the way it did in those lovely glitzy drawings. The Silver Spring Transit Center can't open after years of delay. And people say, and then we have Womata. What is it about this area and transit? We're great at paving stuff, why can't we get some, we're building a garage, you know, how do you, how do you respond to that criticism that this region, not just Montgomery County, cannot get transit ready?
Well, I would say this. I would say that as a region, certainly with the number of people that we have here and trying to figure out ways in which we can move them back and forth is certainly a challenge. And, you know, we see from large urban areas that are similar in nature to ours that they experience the same kind of challenges. I mean, I look at Boston and the Big Dig and others who have all kinds of challenges when it comes to massive projects. Those are things, and when you look at the Silver Spring Transit Center, something that had never been done before, no structure's ever been built like that before. And so, along those lines, sometimes, you know, we're really trying to think outside of the box and do things a little bit differently, and that has its challenges that go along with it, too. I would say that, you know, when you look at some of the other, you know, whether it's metro stations or other mass transit projects that we've been able to do, those have been pretty much online. You look at Mark, that really hasn't had any issues, you know, as we continue to expand, some of the Mark Rail stations, those are, seem to be working well and effective. Our roads, as you mentioned, while, again, still congested, but, but those road projects seem to be progressing relatively well, you know, once we get approvals moving forward. But Kate, it really is something that I think just boils down to, you know, when we have those unique kind of projects, things that are different. I mean, when you look at the Purple Line, you look at what you have to do with the Capital Crescent Trail, some of the buildings, whether it's Apex and others, it really is something that's unique in scope. And so, along those lines, it requires a little bit more time to make those kinds of things happen.
On the campaign finance bill, one of the amendments that came out of committee was to allow outside money to count towards that calculation of, you know, or be matched, excuse me, by Montgomery County's tax dollars. Where do you stand on that particular amendment? Because I understand it's drawing, the sponsor, the chief sponsor's not happy about it, and I assume others might not be as well.
Well, I understand both sides. As a person who ran in 2006, who raised about $35,000, the majority of which, and anybody who deals in campaign finances, a new candidate will certainly understand the first, first place that they tell you to go to is family. And the assumption isn't that family is always going to be in Montgomery County. That was a large portion of the funding that I had, which is a large portion of the funding that most new candidates have. And so, from those aspects, if it's a challenge for you because you are new and people aren't believing that you might be successful, which was my case, didn't get endorsed by any existing PACs or unions or businesses, any of those things, that's where all your money comes from. And if our focus is to get those new candidates, those folks who don't have a base, and allow them to try and make sure that we're equalizing the money, I certainly understand how that goes. Now, I can understand the flip side of it as well. Do you want to have Montgomery County taxpayer dollars going to, you know, match funds that are coming from out of state? The reality is, is that it's still supporting a Montgomery County candidate. So, it's not as if that money's going out of state, it's going out of county, it's not along those lines. It's still supporting a Montgomery County candidate. So, I'm kind of ambivalent when it comes to that. I mean, for, for many of you who know, who've been talking with me from the very beginning, my focus continues to be on campaign finance limits. I really think that that's a direction for us to go in. When we really start restricting the total amount of money that's coming in to campaigns, it really makes a difference, and it's interesting. I was actually talking with Congressman John Delaney on Saturday as he was filming one of his campaign commercials. And I was talking to him about the price and how much money it costs to put on a commercial. He was at the Kintlands in Gaithersburg. And it's interesting because, you know, as we start to talk about where we're going and if people start to go towards commercials and those sorts of things, I mean, you're really talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. And is that going to serve us well when it comes to, again, if we're focusing on some of those people who don't have that funding base, being able to be competitive? And so, that only happens, that doesn't happen with me having a match, and especially if you don't add in the amount of money that they're raising from out of state. So, let's say a person gets $15,000 from their family members out of state and another $30,000, you know, and it's matched four to one. That's $135,000. Well, I mean, compared to most people who spend on district or at-large races, they're severely outspent. And, you know, if we're starting to go towards television commercials again, hundreds of thousands of dollars, you really start to say to yourself, you know, where does it end? And so, you know, I really think that, again, and so, my message to Congressman Delaney, my message to Congressman Van Hollen, when I saw him on Friday at the Holy Cross Germantown Grand Opening, was that we've got to do something at the federal level. You know, I continue to believe that that's the direction for us to go to get and enact true campaign finance reform. And that's not to minimize what councilmember Andrews is doing. I agree that there needs to be a focus. It's just that we're focused on different aspects of how to tackle this, this problem. But we both agree that there is a problem.
You've mentioned the spending limits. Do you think it's fair to put the spending limits on the people who aren't maybe the most successful at fundraising, people that would go into a public financing system? Or should those limits not be on the people outside of them?
It should be on, I mean, quite frankly, the spending limit should be on everyone. I mean, but it's just the same as a system that rewards people for being a part of the system and people that don't. I mean, it's the same sort of thing. You can use the converse argument. I mean, it really is something, and that's why, again, I think that our true campaign finance reform happens at the federal level without forcing everyone to play by the same rules. You're always allowing someone to be able to skirt the system and be able to, you know, or to be able to use it to their advantage. Keep in mind, I mean, we still don't have a limit on independent expenditures, so outside expenditures that happen outside of a candidate's control can continue to funnel in with a campaign finance bill. And so, that's a, that's a challenge in its own right as well. I mean, so there's a lot that we don't have power over. We can only do what we can. And so, I really think that, again, starting at the top, where the true problem exists is the way to attack it. But I applaud councilmember Andrews for trying to really do what we can within the framework we've got. I think that's a good direction for us to go in, which is why I still support the bill. It's just that, again, I think that the more that we can do to really send a message that campaign finance limits are the way to go, I think the better it is for us.
Are you planning an amendment?
I am. I will be proposing an amendment to, to deal with campaign finance limits, absolutely. And councilmember Andrews, in, 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 in full disclosure, has said that he doesn't have an issue with, with, with that as well. You know, he thinks that anything that we can do to try and go in that direction, so I applaud him for support of that.
You gave us an update on the county's full investigation. Do you have a committee report on the mom's case?
You know, it's, it's, it's really one in which I'm, I'm, I'm still extremely troubled by the fact that we haven't been able to get any information from the mother. It's very frustrating, and I have received a number of emails from family members and community members that are very concerned about the process. Let me just say this very publicly, that I do believe that our fifth district and our commander, Commander Gillespie, has done a fantastic job making sure that we're following all leads that are presented to the department and making sure that we can continue to try and cover all leads and investigate all areas. You know, that both the community and the police were out in force this weekend. I actually ran into a couple of members when I was in Gaithersburg at the Kintlands that were passing out flyers, had a chance to talk to some of those community members that were extremely passionate and trying to figure out. And I think that one of the breaks is going to be when we have a person who's seen her. And so, I encourage people to look at her photograph and kind of think back if they've seen her at particular locations. That's going to be, I think, the biggest help. When we can track her steps and her whereabouts leading up to this, that's what's going to help us when it comes to locating the children.
This happened just shortly after Prince George's County shadowy, a woman allegedly asphyxiated her own children. And I know that Angela also works, has spoken out about mental health and mental illness and said, look, I can, I can prosecute every case you bring me. The issue is, we've got a lot of people who are suffering with mental illness and we're just, we don't have the infrastructure that's taking care of them. How do you feel about Montgomery County's approach to this problem?
You know, that's, that's a great question, Kate, and I'm actually very happy that you brought it up. Montgomery County this year invested more in mental health. The county executive had increased that number. The county council actually increased that number even more to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, whether it was in additional folks that were actually handling the intake system as well as support. So, along those lines, Montgomery County has taken mental health very seriously. I was actually just meeting with a group called Peer to Peer that actually works with people who deal with substance abuse as well as mental health issues. And they were thanking the county council for the increased support that we have given them. I do look forward to in this upcoming budget year, with potentially George Leventhal being our council president and his knowledge of the issues and support of the issues as well, to have another banner year when it comes to the support of people that are struggling with mental illness here in the county. I think that overall, I think- I think that overall, I think we've done a pretty good job. We had some very tough times when the budgets were tight, but now that our budget isn't as tight, it certainly does give us the ability to funnel even more money into some of the treatment programs to make sure that we're giving folks the services that they need and deserve.
Does Silver Spring Transit Center, any idea when that's, your cost is coming in?
I don't. When I talked with the county executive on Thursday, he still wasn't sure when that was going to come over or what those figures were going to be. I'd asked about that. Again, I want to stress that as part of that meeting, and you heard it, but I've always stressed it before, any expenditures that we have regarding the Silver Spring Transit Center, it is my expectation that those will be recouped. I feel as though the information is very clear that Montgomery County and its liability is minimized by the contracts that we had in place that asked for folks to be dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And so from my perspective, as well as many other council members' perspective, I think that it's very clear that we will recoup any monies that are expended that are over and above the budget when it comes to the Silver Spring Transit Center.